I've never been to, I said. I said.
I was gonna have water and ice.
I probably hate it.
I'm on cruise ship. I want to.
I got so damn bored. You should. Play from Chinese school, Rhonda Kimmer. Rhonda Kimmer. It's gotta be Lee, but he was a little guy when I knew him.
A lot of business.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
A lot of texts.
She's our. Of course. Yeah. I think.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call the March 12th County Board meeting to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Legions in a moment of silence.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, business items, election of the Chair and any other vacancies that may occur. I'm gonna turn that over to Jim, and Jim will run the election.
So at this point, I would take nominations for the position of Chair of the Chippewa County Board. Mr. Thornton?
Nominate Lee Darrell for the position of County Board Chairman.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Mr. Gullikson?
Steve Garrish.
Steve Garrish, okay. Are there any other nominations? I'll ask three times, are there any other nominations? And are there any other nominations? At this point, I think the two people have been nominated. I would ask that two individuals step forward, maybe Mr. Hartman and Mr. Sikorsky, if you won't mind serving to help collect and count the ballots. These will be, this will be by secret ballot? Papers are on your desk evidently, okay, so if you, we'll start the, we'll go with the first vote now? And if Glenn, and you wanna collect on that side, and Glenn, you collect on that side? You wanna help me count them? Glenn, you wanna help count with her? Just verify, what do you got? You and I can do it. I'll give you those, and you can count. I got yours, okay, here's what I have.
We've got plus four, plus two.
Okay. So you had four, is that right? Okay. Okay, so we have, is Mr. your excuse tonight? Does anybody know?
He's on his way.
Okay, okay. Well, at this point, the vote is seven for Lee Darrell and four for Steve Garrish. We had one empty ballot on my side. Same number?
I got five on the side.
Okay. Okay, so there's, I had one. Do you have?
If you let me, then I had four.
Okay. Two, three, four, okay, so that was right, correct, I had five?
Five.
I'm sorry, five, I apologize. Garrish had five, I apologize. It was four on her side and one on my side. So it's seven to five. Lee is the new Chair. Anybody contest that? Vote? You were witness, you guys witnessed the counting? Okay, then at this point, we'll need a vote for?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair. You wanna run that, you want me to run that again?
Sure.
Okay. Fine with you doing it, but that's okay. I guess soon we'll open, now that Mr. Darrell has been elected as the Chair, there's now a vacancy in Vice Chair. So this time, we'll open up the nominations for Vice Chair. Mr. Hartman?
I'll nominate Jason Bergeron.
Jason Bergeron. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Ms. Hayes?
I'll na, Annette Hunt.
Annette Hunt, okay. Are there any other, Mr. Gullikson?
Steve Garrish.
Steve Garrish. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Ms. Hayes?
I'll na, Annette Hunt.
Annette Hunt, okay, I'll count you, is that good with you?
Yep.
Let's make sure I got it right here. Yeah, here, I'll take mine, I'll count yours, you count. Five, five, yeah, I had, oh, I'm sorry, I added on, sorry, yeah, I had, yes, I had four, three, and one. So this will be five, five, and three then. Okay, we have a tie. Jason Bergeron had five votes, Steve Garrish had five, Annette Hunt had three. So we'll need another ballot. Let's try it again. One, two, three, four, okay, so that was right, correct, I had five?
Five.
I'm sorry, five, I apologize. Garrish had five, I apologize. It was four on her side and one on my side. So it's seven to five. Lee is the new Chair. Anybody contest that? Vote? You were witness, you guys witnessed the counting? Okay, then at this point, we'll need a vote for?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair. You wanna run that, you want me to run that again?
Sure.
Okay. Fine with you doing it, but that's okay. I guess soon we'll open, now that Mr. Darrell has been elected as the Chair, there's now a vacancy in Vice Chair. So this time, we'll open up the nominations for Vice Chair. Mr. Hartman?
I'll nominate Jason Bergeron.
Jason Bergeron. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Ms. Hayes?
I'll na, Annette Hunt.
Annette Hunt, okay. Are there any other, Mr. Gullikson?
Steve Garrish.
Steve Garrish. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Are there any nominations for Vice Chair? Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? We have three names, I guess I would ask you now to fill out a name, and again, ask Mr. Hartman and Mr. Sikorsky to collect as they did the first time. Okay. Okay, so we got here. Jason Bergeron. Jason Bergeron. Steve Garrish one. Annette Hunt one. Bergeron one. Okay, I counted you, is that good with you?
Yep.
Let's make sure I got it right here. Yeah, here, I'll take mine, I'll count yours, you count. Okay, thanks. Five, five, and, yeah, I had, oh, I'm sorry, I added on, sorry, yeah, I had, yes, I had four, three, and one. So this will be five, five, and three then. Okay, we have a tie. Jason Bergeron had five votes, Steve Garrish had five, Annette Hunt had three. So we'll need another ballot. Let's try it again. Not you open and just show them to me, that'd be easier maybe. This time, I'll count them separate. Okay. Okay. We have a winner. Jason Bergeron, sorry, shut my mic off. Jason Bergeron with eight votes and Steve Garrish with five. So Mr. Bergeron is the new Vice Chair.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Thanks, everyone, for your support, I appreciate it. Roll call shows Supervisor your absent. I'd look for approval of the agenda. We do have a change removing the UW extension report till next month.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion on second, any discussion?
I would like to remove the Ethics vote off of the agenda and place that next month when we have all county supervisors present, including the one that you'll be appointing soon.
Okay. We gotta hold on that motion first.
Was the first one is to remove the, was it something to do with the housing, or conditions to next week?
Yeah. UW's extension.
UW extension, I'm sorry, yeah, UW extension, I apologize.
Okay.
And then also to remove the Ethics from the, I think you can take those up in the, you wanna, would you prefer to vote separately on that? I made, yeah, okay, then we should have a separate vote then.
Okay.
Do you need a second to?
Yeah, we'll need a second to do that as well.
A second then.
We're gonna deal with the agriculture one first? Is that the one you wanna deal with first? Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of removing the Ag Extension Report till next month? Aye?
Aye.
Post? All right.
And now you need a second, you wanna remake your motion to?
I'll make a motion to remove the Ethics vote, business item number four, off of the agenda.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion on second, any discussion? All those in favor of removing the Ethics Amendment, or Ordinance? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Mr. Gullikson?
Yep. All right, now we're back to approval of the agenda. We had a motion from Supervisor Hartman, did we have a second on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, thank you. No members of the public wishing to be heard, I would look for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. So move. Supervisor, Supervisor, you have a second? Any discussion?
Who's the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right. Reports, County Administrator Review and Update.
Good evening. We are taping again tonight. The tape did not come out very well last month, so we're gonna try it again before we go live. If you can speak into your mics, it's very important, some computers at work that you could hear people, and other ones you could not, so just if you can make sure of that, thank you. So I attended the Legislative Exchange a few weeks ago, and at the exec, I really didn't go over a whole lot of it, but I think what I'll do is talk through it a little bit, and kind of explain how the budget is done on the state level. I'll tell you how it's normally done, and I'll kind of tell you how they're gonna do it this time, I guess, 'cause it's a little different, but, so normally, the way the budget works is the Governor will put out what he wants his Department Heads to come back with. So that was done before the election, so the Departments submitted their budgets, and then we had an election, obviously there's a change in the Governor. So typically, what would happen is the Governor would work on that budget, present it back to the Senate and Assembly, and then they would work on that budget. If they couldn't come up with an agreement on the budget, they do something they call Joint Committee between the two branches, or between the Senate and Assembly, and then they really come up with what the budget's going to be, and they present that back to the Governor. So then the Governor has the option, he can decide to veto the whole budget, he can decide to veto a part of the budget. I did find out at the Legislative Exchange, 'cause I wasn't real clear, 'cause it's changed over the years, he can take things out of the budget, but he can't add anything to the budget. Once that is done, then the Assembly and Senate can decide if they wanna try and override into the vetoes. Neither one, the Senate or the Assembly, have the two-thirds majority needed to do that, so we're not sure what that's gonna look like. Again, that's typically how it's done. The way it's being done this time is the Governor presented his budget, the Republicans decided that they're not gonna go off his budget, they're gonna go off what they call the base budget, which is what the budget that was presented to the Department Heads, that's what they're gonna work off of. We don't know exactly what that means, except for we're anticipating it's gonna take longer, obviously, to get the budget done. It's something I've talked about for a while, as soon as we, I found out about the election, talked to the Department Heads, the information I'm getting from the people I know down in Madison is that the Governor put in a 2% levy increase, currently it's 0% or net new construction. It sounds like either way, we're gonna have net new construction, they're not sure if the 2% is gonna make it through the budget process or not. For Chippewa County, it's almost the exact same dollar amount, our levy is about 17 million, 2% is about 340,000. Our net new construction last year was right in there, around 340,000, so it's probably not gonna affect us one way or the other. For some counties, it's gonna make a big difference, 'cause their net new construction is really low, we have a good economy here, doing well, so that probably won't affect us too much. So if you move the, Tracy, to the next slide that shows, yeah, keep one more. So this is how it's broken out, there's the Senate, you can see it's 1914, they would need 22, I believe, to get the two-thirds, and if you look, move down a little more, the Assembly, 63, 36, but two-thirds, I got calculated at 66. So I don't see that changing. If we move on, we'll look at the Governor priorities, a couple more slides. That's, this slide and the next slide kind of breaks down what the GOP priorities are. They agree, I would say, the K through 12, they both wanna do something. Medicaid really is not a starter for the GOP, pre-existing condition, they both, again, wanna do some transportation, both middle, middle-class tax cuts, they both wanna do something, clear wa, or clear water definitely is a big topic down there, both wanna do something, and dark stores. The issue is, is what they wanna do and how they wanna do it. So hopefully, they can find some common ground in these areas and move the budget along, I guess time will kind of tell, but, if we move on, so this is what they decided to do, if you see the, what they can do for the Joint Committee on Finance, we'll begin deliberation. Again, Wisconsin's kind of unique, it's that they do have a Joint Committee, it's, the majority party decides the majority of that committee, and what they've decided, they decided to do is start from that base. So again, that's what was presented from the Department Heads, and that's what they'll work off of. They got some stuff about dark stores, again, everybody wants to do something, they just don't know what. Next thing is tax levy, they're talking about that 2% for the levy limits, so we'll see where that ends up. If you go, yep, thanks, one more, Tracy, I think, yep, look at this, so this is when the levy limits hit, so 2008, obviously, when the economy really took a hit, and it's when 0% net, or net new construction started, and as you can see, it went down, and as the economies come back, that has increased. The other thing that counties have been doing is being creative, I would say, with their borrowing, so you can borrow, and that does not count against your operation levy, it's still obviously a tax, and people have to, you know, pay for that tax, but there are counties, because of the 0%, have been putting in things that you typically want, wanna borrow for, IT, I've seen different office furniture, stuff like that, so that's how they've become creative, because of the, they just get crunched more and more, as that 0% levy's been in there, so that's really what we've seen. If you look at conservation staffing, again, there, there's a lot of work, or a lot of agreement on what, that they wanna put money into that, and it kind of flows into the next thing, which is the water quality, a big issue down in the South, obviously, it's a big issue here in Chippewa, and we'll see what they end up doing for that. Transportation, Work Zone Safety, it's probably, they agreed on almost the exact same thing, so I'm sure we'll see some bills coming out on that. Public Safety, again, same thing, very positive, and it seems like they're gonna work together. If we go over to Court Appointed Attorneys, this, they agree on also, they're gonna start working on, on that funding, really, the rub's gonna be as, where's the funding coming from, and how much they'll give the counties. Protective Status, they've talked about this over time, it has to do with the jailers, it's, they'll agree on that, it's just how it's gonna get paid for, as far as the employees will pay for it, or if the counties will, that's kind of the rub. Children and Family Aid Allocation, we passed that resolution for 30 million requests, the Governor put in his budget 15 million, GOP hasn't come out with a number, but they, everybody agrees, obviously, that's a hot topic. Look at, look at Out of Home Placements, I mean, it's just every single county, it just railed on that down at the Legislative Exchange, so we're hoping to see some additional funding in there, we'll see what happens, but I'm sure they're gonna do something. And then this, it's the SRCCY, those are the Secured Residential Care Centers for Children and Youth. This is, has to do with Lincoln Hills being closed, we knew, administrators knew as soon as we saw what the proposal was, that there was no way to make that timeframe, there's just no way to get it into the budget, get it into the flow for the counties even, to decide if they wanted to do it or not. The State is taking care of the juveniles type one, so they're, they could kind of set their own timetable, but it sounds like they're not gonna be able to meet that timetable either, so. I have a call into Eau Claire and La Crosse, because they were talking about doing something with, where we'd have to send our juveniles, but we're, it's still up in the air. So that's all I have for that. Again, I think the Legislative Exchange is probably the best thing I go to, especially when the budget is hot and heavy, so I encourage any County Board Member, if they can go to it, it's a good, it's a good thing to go to. That's all I have, any questions?
Department reports, Housing Authority update.
I'm not that tall. Good evening, and thanks for having us. The reason that we're here is to give you a rundown on what the Housing Authority does, I know that we had been working on an MOU with the County, and to put into writing some of the things that we've been doing together all along, and that has quite a bit of history, have they seen the MOU? Okay, so maybe we'll have, send that out, it has a history of our relationship, the Housing Authority's relationship with the County, and so we're gonna give you a little rundown on what we do, and I'm also gonna introduce, I'm getting ready to retire, so I'm gonna introduce Jessica Olson-Beugh, who is the new Executive Director, we're working together, and I'll be around for a while, kind of fading out into the woodwork, so she'll kind of take over, so I'm gonna give it to Jessica to go ahead and do our presentation.
All right, well, thanks for having us today. Ruth has been with the organization for, I think, 32 years, and really built it from the ground up, I would say, so I have big shoes to fill, and as you'll see in our PowerPoint, we have a lot going on at the Housing Authority. So the Chippewa County Housing Authority was established in 1971, so it's created by Chippewa County. We are an independent local government agency, we have a five-person Board of Commissioners, who are appointed by the County Administrator. We currently have a staff of 11, one, one of our staff members is part-time, and you can find us on the lower level of the courthouse, room 14, and in room two. As we've grown, we've taken up too much space, so we're in two rooms now, but, so you can see our operating revenues for our last fiscal year, were almost $4 million, with about $3.5 million in operating expenses in the same fiscal year. In general, what do Housing Authorities do there, no statutory obligations for Housing Authorities, we really look at the needs of the communities in which we serve, and develop housing programs to meet the needs of local residents who are low to moderate income. We can apply for grant funds to develop programs, and we also have the power to issue bonds for the development of housing projects, excuse me. So our funds primarily come from the federal and state governments, so some, some of our funding comes directly from the federal government, and some is passed through the state. We also do get annual contributions from the city of Chippewa Falls for our Vision Program, which is a minor home repair program, so for those minor repairs. We also get some funding from the United Way of the Greater Chippewa Valley and Rutledge Charities, that's for our Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, which we'll go into a little more, but that's our, our homeless rental assistance program. And the Chippewa County Housing Authority has also partnered with private developers to, by issuing bonds, to develop Roma's Housing Project, and Chippewa Manor Retirement Center as well. So kind of a broad overview of the things that, that we do, and we'll get into a little bit more detail, try to go quickly, I appreciate your time. Okay, one of our big programs that we operate is our HUD Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program, so there's three components of that. The first is the, we have 382 vouchers for Chippewa County residents, and what's neat about this program is that the rent is subsidized, so folks pay 30% of their income toward the rent, the Housing Authority will pay the difference directly to the landlord. What's neat about the program is, it's not, it's not tied to a unit, it's tied to a person, and as long as they continue to maintain eligibility, so they can choose the unit that they would like to live in, as long as it passes our Housing Quality Standards Inspection, and that the landlord is willing to participate, so. On average, each month, the Chippewa County Housing Authority pays $122,000 in rental assistance to landlords on behalf of tenants, so this averages almost $1.5 million per year into our local economy. We also have a rental subsidy program specific for veterans, so we have 22 vouchers issued to, so it's a homeless program for homeless veterans. It's similar to the other, except with this, the VA also provides case management services to really help our veterans maintain that housing stability. So on average, each year, just over $83,000 in rent subsidies here locally. We also have eight vouchers issued to homeowners, low-income homeowners, so similarly, they have to pass a Housing Quality Standards Inspection, participants choose their own home, and the subsidy, the length of the subsidy depends on the length of the mortgage. However, for folks who are low-income with a disability, the subsidy can really last the duration of the mortgage. So on average, with our current participants, it's 51,600 each year into our local economy. We do provide some emergency and homeless assistance in addition to the Rental Assistance Vouchers, so we offer loans for security deposits, one-month rent, or a utility deposit, these loans are no interest, and they're repaid in small monthly amounts. So this, the State hasn't offered any funds for this program since 2004, but since they are loaned out, and folks pay those back each month in small amounts, then it creates a revolving loan, so we're able to continue to offer this service to others. Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, this is a rental assistance voucher. So this averages almost $1.5 million per year into our local economy. We also have a rental subsidy program specific for veterans. So we have 22 vouchers issued to, so it's a homeless program for homeless veterans. It's similar to the other, except with this. The VA also provides case management services to really help our veterans maintain that housing stability. So on average, each year, just over $83,000 in rent subsidies here locally. We also have eight vouchers issued to homeowners, low-income homeowners. So similarly, they have to pass a housing quality standards inspection. Participants choose their own home and the subsidy, the length of the subsidy depends on the length of the mortgage. However, for folks who are low-income with a disability, the subsidy can really last the duration of the mortgage. So on average, with our current participants, it's $51,600 each year into our local economy. We do provide some emergency and homeless assistance in addition to the rental assistance vouchers. So we offer loans for security deposits, one-month rent or a utility deposit. These loans are no interest and they're repaid in small monthly amounts. So this, the state hasn't offered any funds for this program since 2004. But since they are loaned out and folks pay those back each month in small amounts, then it creates a revolving loan. So we're able to continue to offer this service to others. Tenant-based rental assistance, this is a rental assistance voucher coupled with case management services. So this is where the United Way and the Rutledge Charity come in to help support that component of this program. So we've also partnered with Ellie Phillips Career Development Center and their outreach office to provide the case management service and a new collaboration with the Family Support Center. We have vouchers specific to folks who are fleeing domestic violence. And then in those cases, the Family Support Center provides case management services. Homeowner assistance, home repairs. So we have a variety of funding sources to help homeowners with repairs. So these are generally offered in no-interest loans, which then come back again in a revolving loan. So they're often deferred until the owner no longer occupies the property, in which case then they are due in full back to the Housing Authority and we're able to use those revolving loan funds to continue offering home repairs to low-to-moderate income homeowners. Another huge component of what we do at the Housing Authority is the Community Development Block Grant. We administer this program for 21 different municipalities. And currently, the only grant, the active grant is for the west-central region. And so Chippewa County is the lead for the region, for the 10 counties. And the Chippewa County Housing Authority administers those funds. And we also administer all the little municipality revolving loan funds as well. So we do about 50 loans per year. So we come behind a primary mortgage as a second mortgage at zero interest deferred until the owner no longer occupies the property. And really, the purpose is to be able to help low-to-moderate income homeowners provide necessary repairs to their homes and maintain good-quality housing stock in our communities. So we get about half a million dollars each year back in revolving loans, which again, then we are able to loan back out to different homeowners who need repairs on their homes. We have some funds available for foreclosure prevention. Again, these are loans, no interest. And to qualify for the program, they have to be able to show that they have a sufficient income to be able to maintain the property long-term, right? So it's, if it's a temporary situation like a medical crisis or something of that nature, we can really jump in and help out so that, to prevent foreclosures from happening. So depending on the situation, these can be deferred, again, at zero interest or low monthly payments back to the Housing Authority. We have some funds available also for rental property rehab. These are low-interest loans that landlords are able to get a loan from the Housing Authority to rehab rental properties. But then they must rent these units to low-to-moderate income households. We have some homebuyer assistance funds. So this is, again, no-interest loans that can be for down payment or closing cost assistance. And so it's similar to the CDBG loans as well. We're in second position behind the mortgage on the property. So our staff do look through the loans and make sure that this is a solid loan with a decent interest rate that then we will help low-to-moderate income homebuyers purchase a home. We also do some new construction projects. And so on average, two a year, three-to-four-bedroom homes, which are then sold to low-to-moderate income. There's a theme here. We really try to help low-to-moderate income housing needs in Chippewa County. So in the past, we've coordinated these builds with CVTC or the Stanley High School and even a self-help model where families work together to build these houses. We're currently just starting a new grant with Workforce Resource. It's a $2.1 million grant for two years. I might have misspoke. About the amount of the grant. Well, regardless, so we're going to be targeting at-risk youth, ages 17 to 24. They'll get some education, complete their GEDs, their high school diplomas if they haven't already. And they'll get some construction training. And then they'll work onsite building a house from the ground up. And so they'll really obtain valuable skills that they can then use to move forward in their job searches. And then we'll have a new home to be able to sell to a low-to-moderate income homebuyer, who could also qualify for some of our other funding to help with that down payment assistance or closing costs, things like that. Tax foreclosure, collaboration with the county. We've worked with the county on some tax foreclosures and purchased the property for the cost of the delinquent taxes and foreclosure expenses. And then demolished the existing structure, used the land to build new construction, which is then again sold to low-to-moderate income homeowner, or soon-to-be homeowners. We also have some collaborations with the county and with county departments. One of these is Recovery House. This is a property that the Housing Authority owns. And so we cooperate with DHS to offer transitional housing for clients who are recovering from substance abuse or mental health. There wasn't this service available in Chippewa County. And so through this collaboration, we've been able to really meet the needs of the community and have this home available for that purpose. A new collaboration, we call it the Hope House with Criminal Justice Collaborating Council. So this is similar, but it's transitional housing for clients who are participating in the drug court program. And we also collaborate with Human Services on family reunification. As you heard in the Administrator's Report, out-of-care placement is a big issue throughout the state and here in Chippewa County. And so we're able to, if the barrier to reunifying families is housing, we can sometimes help with that. So we currently have two houses that are serving that purpose to reunify families. Lately, we've been purchasing large units for affordable renting. We've seen, really seen the need for larger units, families, you know, bigger families who struggle to afford housing in the open market. And so the purpose of the Housing Authority is not to compete with the market, but really to fill gaps in services. And so when we're seeing this need for larger homes that are affordable for low-income families, we've been buying homes and using them for that purpose. And so we currently have 22 rental properties and 42 units that we rent to low-income households. I guess that's the end of the slideshow. I'd be happy to answer questions or refer to Ruth if I'm not sure yet. I've been with the organization since December. But as you can see, there's a lot happening at the Housing Authority. So questions? All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I just had a quick question about the veteran supportive housing vouchers. I know you had mentioned that the VA is providing the case management services to, you know, to help these participants maintain that housing stability and as well, you know, keep moving forward. Where exactly is that case management service, where is that being provided from? Is that Minneapolis or is that locally?
So there's a local office in Chippewa. And so she tends to meet with folks in their homes. There is a case manager who meets with some of the Chippewa County participants and he does come from Minneapolis. But Casey is our worker that's here locally and provides that service generally in their homes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, thanks for having us.
We have no general reports, so we'll move on to business items. Resolution 08-19.
Resolution to hold the April organizational county board meeting on April 23, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved that the 2019 organizational meeting of the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors shall be held on April 23, 2019. And be it further resolved that the county board will also meet on April 9, 2019, the second Tuesday in April, to transact business forwarded to the county board by the Executive Committee. Motion to approve?
Motion by Supervisor Hunt, second?
Second.
Supervisor Thornton?
I can speak on it quick. Yeah, this is a statutory requirement. It's kind of odd in the statute that you have to do it every year because obviously our organization is every two years. I guess technically, a county could have staggering terms. So I'm sure that's probably why it's in there, but it's something we have to do.
Any other discussion? Let's vote. 14 yes, 0 no. Resolution 09-19.
Resolution to authorize the county administrator to act as authorized organizational representative on behalf of Chippewa County for applications to the Economic Development Administration. Now therefore be it resolved that Chippewa County does hereby formally designate the county administrator of Chippewa County as the authorized organizational representative for all aspects of the EDA grant application and grant award, if awarded, for the Chippewa County Business Park feasibility study forwarded to the county board by the Economic Development Committee. Motion to approve?
Motion by Supervisor Ives, second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Garish.
This resolution, as you know, we're moving forward with the new business park. And despite the fact that we sent them a resolution that the county board passed, a resolution that Economic Development passed, our ordinance, state statute, they're still saying that's not good enough to make me authorized to do what I'm already authorized to do. So this was actually passed, this actually comes from the feds and will be approved if you approve it.
Any discussion? Let's vote. 14 yes, 0 no. Resolution 10-19.
Resolution to declare May 6 through the 11th, 2019, as Chippewa County Economic Development Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby declare that Chippewa County, Wisconsin welcoming and supportive of local entrepreneurship, declare that Chippewa County, Wisconsin supports the activities and efforts of the Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation and recognizes its 27 years of service to the citizens of Chippewa County, declare May 6 through the 11th, 2019, as Chippewa County Local Economic Development Week, commend all Chippewa County elected officials, staff, and economic development organizations for their hard work and dedication in assisting in building our local economy, remind citizens of the importance of the economic development profession in advancing career opportunities and improving the quality of life of Chippewa County, proclaim that it shall be a goal to grow the economy of Chippewa County by developing the local workforce, partnering with local business organizations, and by capitalizing on investment opportunities that strengthen Chippewa County communities. Be it further resolved that the county clerk is authorized and directed to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation, forwarded to the county board by the Economic Development Committee.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Supervisor Gullickson, second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Thornton.
I'll just say a couple of words quick. Obviously, this is to designate May 6 through the 11th as Economic Development Week. I'll say it's been, like I said, when I first got here, this is a fun thing for me to do, the economic development. It moves fast. They do a lot of good work. Charlie Walker, who's in Texas working, he wanted to get away from the weather, but he's not here tonight. But he does a great job. Their whole staff does. They have a great team and they work well with our team. And Tom Seri is the vice chair of the CCEDC Board. Say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'm Tom Waldeski. I'm the vice chair of the Chippewa County EDC. I just wanted to say thank you to the county board and the county officials for all their continued support. So thank you very much. We have a great board put together and great staff. Maureen also sits on our board. And we're looking forward to continuing to support the county and make it a better place to work, live, and have fun. So thank you again.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's vote. 14 yes, 0 no. Okay, ordinance 0519.
Ordinance to amend Section 58-31, Pren D and E, to reduce the speed limit on a section of County Trunk Highway J from 55 miles an hour to 40 miles an hour. Presented by the Highway Committee.
I got Chris here standing in for Brian to answer this one and then the next one right away, too.
Okay, good evening. This was a request that was, that came to the Traffic Safety Committee and was passed through by the DOT and the Highway Committee. Basically, what it is, is to, one, clean up a short section that was 35 miles per hour and change the speed limit from, to a 40 mile, 40 mile an hour zone coming over that overhead on County, on County J going over State Highway 29. We have a very bad sight issue there where people coming to the top of the ramp are having a hard time seeing back to the south. So that's what promoted this. If I can answer any other questions you have on it?
First reading, so.
Yes, sir.
All right, ordinance 0619.
Ordinance to amend Section 58-39, Pren C of the Chippewa County Court of Ordinances to add ATV, UTV routes on County Trunk Highway K. First reading.
This is part of our new process to approve the ATV routes. This particular route utilizes County Highway K along County, along 40th Avenue, Town Lafayette. The first one does, it's a half-mile section. It's gone through the process with the new process with the Sheriff's Department, along with the Highway Department. Both of these were both approved by both the Highway and Sheriff's Department. The second one on Highway K is on the north-south stretch. It basically connects to 50th Avenue. Goes from 50th to 50th, north and south along K. There again, you know, this was gone through by Highway and Sheriff's Department with consensus on approving.
Any questions?
Questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Fund balance policy revisions, first reading.
Policy for use of fund balance non-lapsing accounts.
This was actually before you last month. What we discovered, sometimes in our system, it's called IQM2 system. We'll put a document in there to hold the place because it's going to a committee. And in this case, we did that. And then Melissa and I met with the department heads on each one of these, as we talked about last time. And what we talked about, what we agreed on with our recommendation after talking with the department heads, was to move it to the higher numbers. You can see, non-metallic mining was at 150. After talking with the department, we, our recommendation was 200. And again, 75, 550, and 350. So that's what we're asking to change it to. That's what our discussions were, the full time we talked with the Executive Committee and with the board. What we discovered is when we went to actually implement the policy, we realized those totals were different. So we'd be asking, I'm asking for the pass this and actually waive the second reading because we'd like to have this implemented by the close of the books for 18.
I'll make that motion to waive the second reading of this and vote on it tonight.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion by Supervisor Garish and Glenn, you second it? Oh, Dean, Supervisor Gullickson. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Release? 14 yes, 0 no. All right, I'd look for a motion to go into closed session.
We have to vote on the actual.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I make the motion to approve.
Supervisor Hall, second?
Second.
Supervisor Ives? Any other discussion? Let's vote. Release? 14 yes, 0 no. All right, I'd look for a motion to go into closed session. You gotta read the whole thing?
The whole thing, yeah.
Any communication? Supervisor Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to mention that District 13 has a school that has made the state basketball championship four years in a row. McDonald Max will be going this Friday to play down in Madison once again, so please cheer them on. And secondly, the McDonald Max math team won third place in the Clover Belt Math Meet. So kudos to our next generation.
Thank you.
Agenda items for future consideration? Sorry, Supervisor Ives.
May I ask a question at this time?
Sure.
So can you refresh my memory when the interviews or whatever will take place to replace Supervisor Wilcom? And then also, since the new elections, will the new person then be appointed to the Executive Committee? Since there's only four people on there now?
Sure. So for the, the interviews, they'll be up to the chair. We're going to meet with him tomorrow, hopefully, start the ball rolling. Whoever that person is automatically goes on the vacant seats. And so the chair will also have to bring somebody for recommendation for the exec committee.
And then the opening on the executive committee?
Yep, he'll have to bring it forward.
Oh, you're talking about?
Yep.
Both of them at once, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Second? We're adjourned. Thank you.
He doesn't want to be here.
Oh, hi. Good to see you.